For your dedication, devotion to duty, sincerity of purpose and genuine concern for our community. Thank you for providing such significant service to the city, citizens of Ottawa. Always remember, you've made a difference. From August two thousand to September twenty twenty-three.
Can we make a picture?
That's totally get up picture.
I honestly thought everybody was here for my reports.
Thank you, I appreciate it. You know, there's been a lot of people that have reached out about the whole retirement thing and and I appreciate everybody's thoughts and and their well wishes and and I'm looking forward to it. What I would say to this group and to the community is is I think we I leave you in good hands. You know, we've got a lot, a lot of good people. And and I think they're gonna move forward just as we have been moving forward without missing a beat, so. I I look forward to watching that happen and what takes place down the road, but but most importantly, I think that the people that we have, the people that I've been privileged to work with are going to to continue to do the kind of job that that everyone is accustomed to. So thank you again, and I appreciate it.
Dennis, I always say it's easy for us to sit at this table because of the people who have sat at this table before us. The good job that they've done and the position that they've put us in, and I think you said it correctly, that it's gonna be an easy transition from one director to the next because of what you've done for our community and the and the position you've put us in. It's gonna be difficult for Dan to fill your your seat or your your shoes, but certainly on the work aspect, I think it'll be easy for that transition because of what you've done for our community.
He's up to the task and he's got, like I say, all of the good people that, you know, we're we're not what it's about. You know, and and I can't say that enough, you know, a lot of times we get a lot of credit that I always try to push where it belongs. You know, it's those people that that are out there every day doing the work that really create those situations and and then make those things work, you know, while we work together to get that done. You know, it takes every one of those people and and we've got such great people out there doing that that again, I I believe everything will transition very smoothly and and I will be able to go on and look at what's next, you know, so.
What are your plans now retirement?
You know, I don't have plans. I've done that purposely, you know, I've got a little time here that I intend to take, you know, three, maybe four months and just you know, just kind of kick around. I got a lot of things that I like to do and I will in that period of time, you know, kind of assess, you know, where I'm at, where I want to be and some, maybe some things I want to do down the road, but for three or four months, I, you know, I I think back and, you know, I've been working since I was seventeen years old and, you know, so I've got fifty years under my belt at that point in time, and so I'm going to, I'm gonna kick back and yeah, make it like a vacation, so to speak, and just kind of see where it takes me from there.
Certainly don't shut that cell phone off because your your words of wisdom and that fifty-some years of wisdom will will be used occasionally, I'm sure of it.
There's there's nobody that that I've worked with through my time with this this organization that I wouldn't answer the phone, so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, we have a few items to be placed on the regular city commission agenda. July tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth and thirty-first study sessions. We have our July nineteenth regular meeting and our August second regular meeting. Are you okay with moving that on to the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, items for presentation and discussion. Item A is the resolution authorizing the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor and enhanced serum malt beverages during ladies' night out. Melissa?
Good afternoon.
Riley?
Good afternoon.
Mayor Commissioners, City Manager, what you have in front of you is a request from the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce requesting a resolution for their ladies' night out event, which will be on September twenty-ninth from one to seven. We are asking for consideration to propose that we place this on the September sixth regular meeting agenda. And Ryland is here. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for either Melissa or Ryland?
I know it's an annual event. Do you know much about what you project for this particular year coming up?
In regards to participation, the numbers we would have put would have been from last year, and so I'd imagine it's probably pretty similar to that, as long as it's not a hundred degrees like today.
I remember when they posted eight hundred or that.
Oh, in regards, oh, I see what you're saying. In regards to keep coming up, yeah, absolutely. So that's well more than a hundred. Goodness. Yeah, I think last year we would have had four to five hundred women show up that evening and registered, so that's just people who participated in the scavenger hunt portion of the event. So if there's anyone else that was downtown during that time, we wouldn't have had a record of those numbers, but that's eighteenth annual, so it's been gone for a while, so it's got a bit of a reputation for it and yeah, so I imagine those numbers will be able to hit that. But again, this year too.
Commissioners, any other questions? Are you okay with moving this resolution on to the September sixth regular meeting?
Yes.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All right, item B is the review of our second quarter twenty twenty-three reports.
I will go first, cool. Always, every time we get these, it's always amazing how much info's in it. And the finance portion, I think, was was terrific in this kind of summarization of kind of the reports. I really enjoyed seeing the bonds and all that kind of stuff as well, so no specific things to point out in there, but just a shout out to the team for all the work on that. For Chief Wang, I know you're here. On pages fifty through fifty-two, I was just kind of reviewing monthly crime statistics and noticed family, I think it's family offenses were basically two in April and May and then or March and April and then popped up in May. Do you believe, would that be related to school getting out?
No, usually it's not.
Okay. Is that typically, is that, I guess, what would a family offense be considered?
Well, the way that this data is now pulling in this report, that's a a series of different categories of crimes that are reported. That could be anywhere from domestic violence-related incidents to child need a care, anything really that would deal with the the family or the home that is not covered in some of the other more specific.
So nothing specific that you think, because I saw we jumped from two to sixteen. Nothing, I mean, more heaven flows, nothing of concern?
No. Not a concern, fairly, fairly normal.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if we're gonna pick on Dennis since he got a plaque today. I didn't see it on here and I had some questions come to me about it. I didn't see any mention of splash pad. Obviously, that was obviously through Q two, so we're still a few months behind, but I didn't know if you had an update on that.
To be honest with you, and Michael can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not have an update on that. We have not seen anything really move forward since some of our last conversations with both the engineer and the the contractor. At this point in time, the belief is we likely will not see a splash pad until springtime. Next year.
Anything on that that you need from us, or are we waiting for their, is that their?
No, really, I think at this point, we're waiting for, you know, just some some communication from the the contractor and the and the engineer to keep it moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Those were the two biggest things that I really had, but again, a lot of great information in here, so everyone who worked to put those together, it's a great read. I think it's eighty-five pages or something like that, and I hope exactly that.
Anything else? Mayor Broken Skidmore?
Yeah, page thirty-eight, that's it was the investment report. I do like that. On that Oakstar Bank, it has the Cedars, and I want to make sure I understand that right. That's a CD there, but they participated after other banks, so we have full protection from the FDIC.
Yeah.
Is that how it works?
Yes.
Normally, they protect up two hundred fifty thousand unless we have fledgings, but is that, I'll make sure I stand that right.
Yeah, so the Cedars investment pool, you, I mean, you did a pretty good drag down there, so what it does is multiple banks participate in it. Oakstar just, they've been offering their bids lately have been through the Cedars program, so the rates that we've received through them have moved to that, and so what it does is it spreads your investment up over a plethora of banks, so it keeps all of the amounts at each bank under that rate, so nobody has to really pledge because you're spreading the risk out over a large pool of people.
So that's kind of a new product, I guess.
And so we also can select banks for them not to put any of our funds in with the Cedars, so like since we have a lot of our funds already at Kansas State Bank, they're excluded from an option if we put money in there, so then it doesn't mess up their pledged rates. So it doesn't confuse that.
Good, and I guess the auditor is okay with that. There's no issue with that, so it must be something.
Yeah, they send us a monthly statement that just shows us where the breakdown is so that we can track our money and we know that they're complying with the rules and regulations.
Yeah, I'm glad to see my old bank involved in this now, so that was exciting to see. I saw those percentages next to us, I thought, wow, that's pretty good, ten point five percent, but that's just amount of.
That's the amount, yeah, yeah, no, it's not the rates.
I go excited for that. But I would like to see the rates on some of these. When we get down to the maturities, I I don't see any rates on there. And I know you're probably limited on space with this, but maybe we can eliminate the I came up the ninety-six twenty number, maybe we can put a rate in there so we know what each product is bringing in for it, just as a suggestion.
No, no, I appreciate that, because this is a new format, and so we tried to kind of mix up what we were showing and decide what was relevant, but I'll add that on there.
I like the new format. I just saw where the investment gross total for twenty twenty-three is projected to be thirty six, three hundred sixty thousand, and that's an exciting number. Do you know what last year's was by the end of the year?
So it's it's on that little map there. I mean, it's real low down, so it's on exact amount. I mean, I can get you the exact amount later, but that's the Yeah.
Okay, good job. That's excellent. And then again, investment goal for twenty twenty-three, would that be not necessarily paid interest, but accrued through the end of the year? You know how that was figured?
Um, so that is actually realized interest on that spreadsheet, so that meaning that it's in the bank interest by, and that's to date. Not by the end of the day, year, that's to date.
So we got some of that, we'll come to next year.
Yeah, then there's a whole nother, I do a tracking of unrealized too, so I have kind of already calendared out twenty-four and then we're even looking into twenty-five to try to you know, build a more steady.
I look at that, it's three hundred thousand more than last year roughly, so that's over two mils right there, so I think it's a great job to be able to utilize this asset we've got here and some of this idle funds and and you guys doing a great job with that, so keep it up.
Thanks. I do want to specify that all all of that money goes into the general fund. It does get spread out across all of the funds that participate in the, that have funds invested, so it's not all straight middle levy.
Yeah, but I guess, well, to, I guess, I was thinking.
I just want to clarify that.
Middle levies, yeah, you're right, good point.
The viewers at home.
Yes, just a little clarifying statement.
That's all I have. When I got something, Chief, on page forty-eight, there's something about Walmart grants. With some cameras, is that correct? You can explain what that is and what, where they'll be placed and how they're used.
Yeah. With the Walmart, hold on a second, excuse me, Walmart loss prevention staff that's been working at Walmart and very active, as you can tell from the stats and the monthly reports on this new format. The the page that provides a monthly crime report. If an incident is reported, it will show up on that left-hand column, and then if we make an arrest for that particular incident, that will also, so anything you don't see listed there means that that particular crime category may not occur within that given month, nor the arrest related to that. So if you can see that shoplifting in April was ten, shoplifting in May was twenty-three, shoplifting in June was ten, and the majority of those have occurred out at Walmart. It's obviously our largest commercial building, commercial business that had that type of activity, so working with their loss prevention, a grant opportunity came forward from them through the Walmart Foundation, and they awarded the grants to the police foundation and the city to acquire what's called license plate reading cameras. And that's through a company called Flock, which is used extensively in other communities. In fact, we learned about this partnership and grant opportunity when Walmart implemented this program in another community in Southeast Canada that was experiencing a similar issue. And the cameras have been put up around the Walmart area, which record tags that are driven so that they provide us investigative lead for people that may be involved in theft at Walmart. And with those cameras, we have made apprehensions for people that we did not yet know or identify based on the data.
Seems like I read that we you really can't arrest someone until they leave the building with the little merchandise, and is this kind of the plan to get them as they're driving away?
It is not, no, no, that it it is not a, it, no, we're not in that particular scenario, work like that. It would be something that we can use in a vestigial lead after the facts, so if they were to walk out, maybe not be apprehended.
Okay.
We would be able to use that, like the video that they provided to us to identify people that we could follow up and arrest on.
I got you.
And, you know, we can actually, we can arrest people in the store. Walmart's policy plays a factor in that, where they don't stop people until they've passed a certain point.
Right.
And then we can usually arrest them. So a partnership with them, working with their existing corporate policy and how they handle shoplifters, plus ours to establish the correct statutes, so we can enforce that municipal court or district court for the amount. We work together to make sure that we can do that appropriately.
It seems to be a growing problem all over the country, the smash and grab, things are going off in different states, and I think that disgusting that is to see that happen, but and plus, we don't get sales tax dollars on that, do we? So I guess another disadvantage on that, unless they report it to us, but they won't tell it. I think that's our head, Mayor.
Mr. Gaver?
Sure, I'd love to go. Thank you. I do have, first of all, I really like the new format, so thank for everybody, and I know that a change in format is not necessarily easy, and it does take some change or some time to get used to that, and it will take myself, it will take some time to get used to that new format and how it is all put together, but I appreciate the new format. Thank you to those that were so patient and going along with change of form. I do have a few questions and Chief Wang Gardner, I I swear you're not on the hot seat today, but you just keep on coming up. On page forty-nine, I I love the kind of snapshots, this kind of rapid-fire information that you've got in there. Tell me, what is house watch?
That is a program that we offer where citizens, if they're going on vacation or they might be going away from their home for a particular period of time, can ask for extra patrols. And we kind of have a link on our website for those forms or an email address where people can pour that information to us, and once we receive them, we enter them into our mobile car computing system, so that the officers each day when they go out, they have a list of houses that have asked for additional checks, and we can document a lot of those as activities. And that is what the house watch in a particular report is for. Vacation check or house watch, you may have heard them both referred to as similar programs, but that's what those are.
And so that's confidential. I mean, you're keeping that as the police department, but you're just stepping up your patrol regarding that particular residence.
Yeah, it is confidential. We don't post those out where those might be. But that's internal, but the officers have access to it in the car, so they can drive by and pick a note. Everything's good. If not, then they'll address that.
Okay, and so then they have a contact with the with the homeowner or whatever.
Yeah, we ask them the, and the form, ask for a contact, or maybe somebody else who might be local with people and then we might contact them if there's an issue.
And so like you said, it's it's on our website. If somebody is getting ready to go out of town, maybe you could certainly do that. What about foot patrol?
So most of those occurred at Walmart. Earlier this year, I implemented a foot patrol program with the, because of the rise of shoplifting, asking officers to get out and be a visual deterrent at Walmart, so periodically when they can, the district officer stops at Walmart, walks around and tries to just walk through the store again. We're out there, if if loss prevention requests us to come and handle a shoplifter, that might be in custody. But this is another one of those things we try to do to keep that number, and we're gonna continue to do that as much as we can. We do foot patrols in other places, the the college campuses, some downtown, but honestly, not very many, and that number are likely to have. The best way to do that is extra foot patrols in addition to the media controls that we're doing. And Walmart is nice enough to also, parking lot spot, and their parking lot with a flashing blue light or police car parked, and so when we go out on foot patrols, we like to park there as well, so anyone that might be thinking about stealing, comes through and sees that car, and hopefully does not.
Good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, Terry, on page one oh four, I noticed in your budget, and I wasn't sure that you're transferring, that you transferred in, it looks like at the end of June, sixty thousand dollars to CIF, which is and so are you making a monthly contribution?
I just did that because we got our second big check, and if I put it in another account, it would have put us over the insured amount.
Okay.
So I put it in there because we've already budgeted.
So how often are you transferring to CIF, to the capital?
Usually it's at the end of the year.
Okay.
But I wouldn't have it because of that.
Um, my next question is not necessarily something that is on the report, but Vanessa, I'm sorry that I'm calling in you and did not tell you ahead of time, but it is so hot outside, and I'm wondering if you could maybe address how our four-legged friends are coping at the animal shelter, and if you have any suggestions for our citizens on how they can best take care of their four-legged friends.
Yeah, so they're they're doing well out of the facility. I know police departments had quite a few complaints coming from citizens about dogs left outside without proper care, so that is the best way to go about that, is to report it to the police department if you're seeing an animal that's in neglect, and these temperatures are dangerous, so if someone forgets their pet in this kind of condition, that can be deadly for the pet. If there, we do have kennels at the shelter for people who don't have cooling for their pets right now, contact us, we can board your pet temporarily and wait for this heat wave to get over and then return them to you. So we have programs at Bray Park to help with folks, but if people are just disobeying local ordinance, then yeah, both police departments are forwarded in.
Great, thank you. That ends my questions.
Thank you. I have no questions. I do agree with the comments about the new formats. I think they are wonderful. They make the seems like a lot more information, and I think so with roughly forty more pages than what we typically get, but at this point, is there any department heads that would like to come up and speak about anything that that we haven't asked them about and they think would be pertinent to the community? Where's Olivia? Okay.
There you go. There we go.
I'm trying to give somebody else an opportunity, and my voice is cutting out, I apologize.
I started to think that maybe you guys don't hear from me, because ever since I came in, we haven't had any reports, so. But we've had reports. Well, we have reports, but I haven't been in person, so. We are tracking along with the Main Street Association. We have had a lot of things going on, a lot of things that are making ground and movement going. We have started shooting out our affiliate levels. We kind of changed things up from calling it a membership to affiliates, and previously, when talking to you guys, we were just working on our tiers, so we have now gotten those finalized, and they are being pushed out, and my board has graciously agreed to help with collecting those, so our biggest thing on those is that kind of changing the verbiage and stating that, sorry, guys, that you don't have to be a business downtown to be an investor in our community, anybody being an investor and be active in our community. Our committees are actively, all working committees, now we have chairs and making progress. We do still have positions on the committees, so people are looking for places to volunteer. And we made a move in the chamber, that was a big thing, and we've been really working on growing our partnerships in the community and working with other entities, I guess, and quarterly trainings, working on some great opportunities, different things like that. Any questions?
And shameless plug, our moms will be here September seventh, so hit us before you hit anyone else.
The moms.
Ten dollars, they look great, yeah, so.
They'll beautify the, some will go into our corners downtown that are through our corner committee. Our lovely chair of our design committee is also gonna be working with that, so but there are extras that are for sale as well, so is a fundraiser for the main street.
Sarah, thank you. I asked for Olivia, and you just stood up, just everybody to know that you're Sarah, not Olivia, so, thank you.
I did have something else. Since Vanessa's here, I just wanted to point out that we're making money. I mean, it's positive. I still like to see the black at the last line of your your numbers here. Also, I want to ask you a personal question. You're from Australia, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, my wife got me a boomerang from my birthday. And, you know, I had one when I was a kid a long time ago, so I went outside to throw it, and I thought I forgot how to throw it, but, you know, it came back to me. And then, and then I threw it as hard as I could, and Vanessa went clear out of sight. That was two weeks ago, and I'm living in constant fear. How long should I wait? I thought you were gonna do like, did you do or did we don't?
I do have two updates, if I can.
Just an update about his boomerang.
Two updates. One is Al Gala is coming up September twenty-second at the Bottle House. It's at five thirty. You can buy tickets on our website, and we also have links on our Facebook page. Fun night, good food, live music, alcohol, get everyone a little loose, raise money for the best cause that we all love. So that is a big one. The other one is, I don't know, some people have seen some media alerts come out. We're actually negotiating contract with the city of Manhattan to provide animal services to that community. It comes with a commercial lease of their building and their property, so we're in process of negotiating that contract. We are so far the preferred vendor right now, and this is great for Franklin County because it spreads the pressure across more folks. And increasing the volume through an animal shelter makes it more efficient, lowers your cost per pet. But you don't want to increase your volume and increase your capacity, because capacity costs money. So what we need is we need more community members to be supporting our organization, and this is one fast way to scale really quickly is to form contracts with other cities and get another facility. So that's really exciting for us. If it follows the plan that we think is going to happen by January one, we will have acquired that team that contract and all of those services and be running our programs in Manhattan as well, so it's great news for Franklin County. It's great news for us, so hopefully you'll hear more about those updates. Good news.
Thank you.
I'm gonna sneak in here.
Please.
I actually have presence or give the handout.
Yeah.
First, I want to know if any of you guys know what these are.
Mike, you're gonna need to answer this.
It's a touchdown. I was like, do we have to touch that?
A middle-aged man.
They used to give them out to soldiers and they fit your.
That is correct. It is correct. Winner, winner, chicken dinner. So I'm giving each of you a book that talks about this story. And it is from World War Two, nineteen forty-one. That was during the time when the Nazis were doing book burnings, and we went into World War Two, and a group of librarians got together and decided that the people at war needed books to read. So they commissioned and were able to collect twenty million books to send to war. Then in nineteen forty-three, the War Department created their own department, led by librarians again, and they created the pocketbooks that could go in the pockets, front back pockets of the warriors, so that allowed them to be happy, be away from the war, even though they were at the war, and we, actually, they credit these books for helping win the war. I hope that you guys will read the book, and let me know what you think. It's really excellent. Our board read the book and discussed it. But it's a really good book, and it's historical nonfiction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want a quick update about all things?
Please, yeah. We're just, we're just gonna have everybody.
Do you have any gifts?
So it's within quarter two, but it's happening right now. So two weeks ago, uh, the sign went up on the front of the building. If you haven't driven by and seen it yet, it looks. Absolutely phenomenal. And I just want to say thank you again to everybody in this room for their support and backing for that is something um. I haven't seen any traffic accidents outside of people rubbernecking as they drive by, but there are a lot of spectators uh driving by and looking at it. Um, also remodel is officially underway. Demolition began on Jane or July twenty-sixth. We actually got rid of a few seats before then for some donations to the Friends of the OMA that they're putting back into. Their purchase of new concession stand equipment, but uh demo is complete. We're um at the point right now where we framed out the new soundboard. We're replacing some boards underneath the carpet. The the wood floors actually looked pretty good after we pulled that carpet up. We have a few places that are. Um, needing a little bit of rebuild, but um I texted Commissioner Graves when they pulled up that carpet and said, hey, how about another flooring project? You feel like staining? And she said to lose her phone number. So we're. Exactly. Um, so we've done that. Um, the new soundboard's framed out. The pit has officially been. Covered the ceilings in the rooms beneath that where we do our storage has been raised. So people taller than myself can stand in there and actually get in and out of there. Uh, this weekend, I, we hadn't budgeted to paint the auditory. I'm like, you know, that. Was quite a hefty quote. Um, and I called on my friends of the OMA and OMA Advisory Board members two weeks ago and said, hey. How are you guys with paintbrushes? And so this weekend, almost a hundred percent of both of those boards came in. And uh we got that baby painted and it looks absolutely fantastic. We have a little bit of trim work that we're still doing, but um. It looks incredible and Commissioner Kayla was there helping us the weekend as well. So um. Right now, the project is on schedule. Our first show will be October thirteenth and. We're planning an after-hours event that week before with some of our board members who are musicians to play some music and welcome you in to see. Uh, everything new. But again, thank you for your support on that project and we can't wait to show it off to you.
Thank you.
And no Taylor Swift, I guess.
And that is Tammy Swift.
Tammy's her stepsister.
We just gotta get him in the door.
Well, she's a good cook, but you just can't say. So that's what I hear.
Any other directors? All right. As I say, every time we do these reviews, thank you all for the hard work that you put in for all the information in this. Um, if you uh want something to read. There's about a hundred and twenty-two pages here of valuable information. If you think nothing's going on in our community, you're dead wrong. There's a lot of good stuff going on. So. Uh, get on the website, look up our most recent agenda. There's a lot of good information that our our directors have uh. Uh, put forward uh for each and every one of us to review. So thank you all. All right, comments by our city manager.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and uh city commissioners. Uh, as I go through this, since we have a lot of our um. Players here today, uh, after I read your part, if you got anything additional to add, please feel free to speak up and provide any additional comment. Last week with the water plant, uh, they saw uh the water intern, uh, Davine. Alarcon uh completed his uh summer internship and he was integral in uh helping us uh deliver. And collect and enter the uh data from the water line surveys for the lead service inventory that's required by the EPA. Uh, crews continued to assist uh the electric distribution team with uh storm damage investigation and cleanup. And this week's highlights, we'll see them installing a new protective grading over the uh water inlet trough at the uh treatment plant. As well as uh continuing the investigation into the location of water leaks in the flooring of the municipal pool. The water reclamation facility, last week's highlights was the draining and cleaning of the treatment facilities, North Clarifier for the annual inspection and assisting. The OMA with stage setup and breakdown. Uh, it's a pleasure also. Uh, that I pass along that uh it was reported that our operator one Haley uh. Ragoon has achieved her class two wastewater operator certification. Haley joined the city on June twenty-sixth of this year. So uh, that's always good to see our uh team members coming online. Especially after being a new hire. Uh, this week's focus for the water reclamation. Uh, facility, uh, it'll be the lift station maintenance and weed control as well as application of new gravel. In uh the lift station work areas that are in need. Our distribution crews continue to uh do their work in implementing more permanent repairs to the distribution system. Following the uh July thirtieth storm, including uh the ongoing street by street assessment of street lights for repair replacement. Also want to uh give them additional um. Kudos for uh working to prepare our main street holiday and festival lighting. As uh we prepare for the uh September Car and Tractor Show and the kickoff for the uh twenty-three holiday season. Because it'll be here before we know it. Ed, did you have any additional comments for how that, because I know it's gonna be an arduous slog going forward. You were thinking October might be.
We're starting on uh, just so you know, we are starting on Christmas lights tonight. So and we're doing this week. Well, and probably next, and then we're about out of time. So. Um, also, we are still working holes that. Needed repaired during the storm and. We haven't even made it to the streetlights yet. So. And there's a bunch of them through town. So we will get there, which is gonna take.
Yeah, because you had about a dozen that you you knew needed. That doesn't count what you found in your inspection.
No, I had the, I think you had it in there that the. Had a guy from Will Scott Spielman from the Water Reclamation. He drove through town and wrote them all down and he had. Two pages of the big notebook full. So I don't know how many that is, but at least forty some that we know of. So. Yeah, it's just a long process.
Thank you.
Ed, you start decorating for holidays as early as my wife does.
Yeah.
It's a big job.
I'll get your Christmas tree.
True, true.
Um, and then our production highlights, uh, they continued operation for units six and seven, providing power to the grid for the SPP on. August eleventh. And this week, uh, they're focusing on uh the items necessary for the uh the run season going forward. Did you have any additional comments?
We ran last Thursday, Friday, yesterday, today, call in tomorrow soon.
All right. Well, thank you. I know you guys, it's a, it is a lot of work to keep those things running too and having them always at the ready. So thank you. Um, Public Works Operations, uh, crews uh continue with uh curbside pickup from the recent storm debris. And then um our police departments. Uh, hiring endeavors persist. Uh, we have multiple candidates at different stages of the recruiting process, including physical testing. Uh, chief interviews were conducted and uh tests were scheduled. Unfortunately, we've also seen resignations. Uh, from uh an officer in our detective unit who's taken a new position with the Udora Police Department. And as we approach Labor Day, the OPD is initiating the STEP campaign, which is heightened enforcement, targeting speeding seatbelt and DUI offenses. Also want to point out that in uh the community partnership, uh, the Ottawa Police Foundation members are geared up to join uh BoHogs Wild fundraiser. Which aids in collecting for funds for Dare Camp. And also you may be aware that Chief Wayne Gardner is an active member of the Franklin County Substance Use Prevention Coalition and. He'd like to highlight the uh fentanyl awareness presentation scheduled for August twenty-third at the Franklin County Commission Chambers. Um, and then also our OPD will be enthusiastically attending the airport fund days on Saturday, August twenty-sixth. Our fire department reports that uh the first round of school inspections have been completed in preparation for the school year. Uh, the department will host a September eleventh memorial service on Monday, September eleventh at eight AM at Station One. Uh, more information will be provided in future reports and on uh OFD's uh social media page. And then for the fourth year, OFD is partnering with Ottawa High School for the Fire Science Pathway Program. And we currently have five students participating. Some HR and administrative items, uh, Michelle and Danielle report that we've got the following highlights and I appreciate. Uh, Michelle getting me some items for this next uh discussion point today. Uh, the aforementioned uh. OPD planted interviews that were conducted on the twelfth with an employment officer being made and accepted. Uh, OFD welcomed their newest probie back on August seventh as firefighter Jaden Hall joined the department. A part-time receptionist will join the city team with the uh Neighborhood and Community Services Department and the city received six applicants. For the five open of the nine advertised positions and want to note that the nine vacancy positions. There are more than one position for some of those vacancies. I want to highlight uh Neighborhood and Community Services, uh, the position the city planners vacant's been posted for fifty-three days. It's uh been viewed one thousand four hundred and twelve times with nine applications received. And zero applications meeting the minimum qualifications. The uh position's been promoted with a slew of. Sector and industry uh pathways, including uh. University-specific email distributions for KU, UNKC, Kansas State. And uh, the LKM Missouri Planning Association, uh, the Metro Planning Association. Uh, the lack of interest in the position's not unusual to the city of Ottawa or the position in particular. Uh, this is across the region as we're all having difficulty hiring qualified candidates, especially. Those requiring technical proficiencies. Uh, when the position was last advertised and filled back in October of twenty-two. The city received twenty-five applications with two qualification, uh, two applicants meeting the minimum qualifications. Because of this, Director Landis and I solicited RFQ submissions for consultation of planning services with. Shockey Consultant Services being the best consultant to meet our needs. In consultation with the city attorney, we're working to finalize a service agreement with Shockey Consultant for Planning Services, essentially staffing as a. Planner one or planner four. Uh, the provisions of the agreement will not cause any undue budget pressure as. The existing vacancies currently experienced within the department give us ample um budgetary constraint for that. Uh, the agreement would require at least two days in office in person, as well as staffing of the planning commission meetings. With the director and initially me as well. Uh, attendance at the city commission meetings would be both in person and remotely as needed. Remote attendance by the consultant and onsite presentation by the director or an additional staff member and. With the consultant available to come and answer any technical questions that might be available. So I also give a brief rundown of some projects there and we'll make sure that we uh. Add the uh the splash pad to this as we will have a target date of uh the spring opening. So then. When May rolls around, we hope to be able to see kids uh playing in a splash pad in the park.
Anything else?
Uh, did include a flyer for uh Saturdays flying in from eight to one. That concludes my report. If there are no questions to myself or any of the city congressmen.
Where we at on the chickens then? I would slightly stop there.
Uh, we're currently working on an aggregate, essentially a a an all-encompassing uh city agriculture resolution. And some specific details for both uh chickens and bees. So we're optimistic that here uh. Before the autumn, that we'll have something. Do you have anything additional to add?
Any other questions? Uh, comments by city commissioners, uh, Commissioner Kayler.
Um, I'm gonna circle back around to Terry about this. So thank you so much for providing to us, but tell us about. How somebody in the public who maybe listening to this, tell them about this and. Is it available? What? Tell us about this, more about this.
Yes, and we have the book available in our library for checkout. It's also available on Google. You can read it or listen to it on Google.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, and then I want to say just a couple of words about Dennis. And I, I really, I don't know a day in my life that I don't know Dennis. Like, I think I've known you my entire life. Not your entire. I know, you don't have to tell. You don't have to tell. Um, and so not only did Dennis, when I was young, make some like some of the best pizza. In the city. Um, he had one of the best jukeboxes and I know my parents probably spent. Enormous amounts of quarters. While I was there, um, because that was a popular place to be on Friday nights. Um, and the city was really blessed to welcome him with his many talents. When he came over to the city. So, um, but one thing that I know that we might not have talked about, but Dennis is really instrumental. And working with um Kansas Municipal Energy Agency. Um, whenever we go to um. The KMEA conference, he is kind of a sought-out guy that they look for um to talk to. He's so well-respected. His expertise is very important to so many individuals across the entire state. And so thank you for for doing that, Dennis. And um, I just never once while I babysit for your kids, did I ever think that I would sit here and be able to say um. And have the floor to tell you, thank you so much for a job well done. And so I appreciate it. I appreciate all that your wife went through. Or that Stella went through, through all the years. And um, so thank you so much to the Tharps for your service to our community. Thank you.
You.
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
I as well want to say thank you. Um, I've obviously only been up here and thankfully I was in diapers when I started here. So I don't, haven't known you as long. But you've been a huge help in the time that I've been at this table, um, answering any questions that I have and. Been a wealth of information. So I just want to say thank you for that and the city, I'm sure thanks you as well. Um, another thing this week, it's hot. Um, so make sure if you're outside for extended periods of time, obviously check on your pets. Um, I'll get real upset. Um, but check on yourself as well. I don't think we have any official cooling stations, but the library is always open and books are great. So. Come into the library, read a book. There's a water fountain. Um, it's a great place to cool off as well if people need some places. To do that. So be safe this week. Um, and I saw nineties next week, so I'm excited about that. I know, I'm gonna wear my sweatshirt. Yeah.
Mayor, ma- thank you. Mayor Proten's getting.
Speaking of diapers. But anyway, Dennis, uh, I know this last storm we had, I'm sure. Here this comes here, it's so close to retirement and you've got to deal with the storm, but you guys do. Yeah, that's right. Last test, but you did a great job on all that. I I really appreciate that. I too remember when you had Pizza Village and I. Uh, we had a class uh fundraiser at the high school when I was there and uh I was sent to your shop to go get the pizzas. Well, back then they put the pizza on cardboard circle and papered up to a triangle. So you hold it right here. And so I had to put these in my car, but I couldn't stack them on each other. So I put them all over the backseat, all over the car, about thirty or forty of them. And it started steaming up in the car and I couldn't see. Got to windshield. I made it to the high school. I don't know how, but I'm sure I was all over the road that way. So. Uh, nobody stopped you. I appreciate that. But nonetheless, it was a great experience, but. You're, you're quite a pillar in the community. I hope you're gonna stay here, you and Stella. We hope you will anyway. So I hope you have it. Stay as a citizen and who knows, you may get rent for city commission now. So. Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, I have nothing else to add to all the comments that have been made. Uh, a few announcements. Uh, August twenty-eighth, we have our study session here at four PM City Hall. And then September fourth, Labor Day holiday, our study session has been canceled. Is there anything else to come before the commission?